Is everybody back on the council? Welcome, everybody. This is Isle of Palms City Council, round two. We started at 6:00 PM, but it's now 6:05 Tuesday, November 27th.
Did you?
I did.
So is it blinking or solid?
Solid.
We're good.
Okay. So again, welcome to everybody. Thank y'all for being here. We're gonna start with number one, acknowledge that both the press and the public were duly notified of this meeting with accordance of the Freedom of Information Act. We're gonna start off with invocation. Feel free to join me if you like, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call. Oh heavenly Father, I give thanks for this island paradise we live on, for our residents and for our city family personnel. I thank you for all that you have blessed us with. With this holiday season upon us, please help me in helping others and look after those less fortunate. Look after those who are sick or have lost loved ones. I ask for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that affect this community in the future. It is in your holy name that I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Buchanan.
Here.
Councilmember Flynn.
Here.
Councilmember Kinghorn.
You're here.
Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Rice.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Carroll.
Here.
Assistant interim administrator, Regoso, and Assistant Attorney, Copley.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All here, again. Reading of the Journal of the previous meeting's minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, changes? All in favor, seconded by saying aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? Citizens' comments. When we do this, I think we've got a crowd tonight, so I'd like to limit everybody's comments to two minutes or less. If it's the same thing over and over, let's not be repetitive on it. But the first part of our presentation, in fact, let's start with the citizens' comments before we go to our McKay Kitty. So citizens' comments, please. Do we have anybody who wants to come up and speak? Yes, sir. Come up to the microphone, name, address, lest we don't know you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Paul Coleman, and I will first admit, for a guy like me to keep it under two minutes as a preacher is a little stretch. I am the pastor of a new church here on the Isle of Palms called Deepwater Church that just started nine weeks ago. And so I just merely wanted to introduce myself, tell you I appreciate what you're doing, and I want you to know I pray for you, as the New Testament commands us to pray for those in power. So I appreciate what you're doing, and I just wanna say, part of our mission here on the church, our tagline is to love the island and beyond. And so I'd like to look for more, maybe opportunities in the future to partner with the council for ways that we can serve the island, because we just love the people of the island. So anyway, we're honored to be here, Deepwater Church, Pastor Paul Coleman, and I do live on the island. I live at 310 Palm Boulevard. Matter of fact, I live right next door to St. Mark's Church, and that wonderful Lutheran congregation is allowing us to meet their Sundays at 5:00 PM. So anyway, I think I made my time.
Very good.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Good example.
And I see the number of cars there, that's great. Anyone else? Please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Leah Hamilton, and I'm also an Isle of Palms resident. I'm here this evening to implore the council and the mayor to allow the students of Sullivan's Island Elementary School boys' basketball team to have access to practice at the Isle of Palms rec center's indoor basketball court. As we all know, and actually before I say that, and I'm gonna be quick, can you guys raise your hands, obviously, the boys who are here from the team, and then the parents as well, that are here in support of this idea? I just felt like you needed to be acknowledged. We all know that the school was built without a gym, and this is very difficult, because they created this wonderful league for these students to play at a higher level and to compete against other students that are playing at a higher level throughout Charleston County. The other schools have a gym. We do not. And so we've been scrambling over the past years, 'cause my son, it's his second year on the team, to find a space. Sullivan's Island Baptist Church has allowed us to play there, and we are so grateful and thankful for that, but it's a half-court. The only other places to play would be the rec center. I know that in the past, there's been different arguments and reasons why, and I respect that, and us parents respect it and understand, but I'm here tonight to just discuss very briefly, hopefully some resolutions to those problems. One of them being that the practice times would interfere with the rec center's practice times for basketball. We practice from 2:30 to 4:00 PM. As I know and recall from previous years, practices don't usually begin until 4:00, and games as well are later on in the day. So we would be out of the hair of the rec center. We would do our best to obviously not interfere with anything that the basketball department is doing. Secondly, there's been brought to my attention about liability, and we have been on top of this. We're thinking, what can we do? So we've come together as parents and players to create a waiver that's very thorough. We actually have it tonight. All the parents and players have signed it to state that the rec center would not be liable for any accidents, any incidents that occur while we are playing or practicing, not, you know, no games, just to practice. Once again, it's for a full court. Nine out of 12 kids live on the island. They are there every day at the rec. We utilize it. Our other children are there playing. We love the rec center. We understand that is busy. We understand that, you know, it's difficult to get in there, but this is the only school that is here, and we don't have a place to play. If we did, we'd be somewhere else if we could, right? Because we don't, you know, we're not trying to stir the pot. We just really want our children to have access to this wonderful facility. Last, but not least, I have heard that there's been an older man's men's league.
Be careful.
That has been, has had, has been able to reserve the court, full court. And I don't, I don't know, this apparently happens on the weekends, and I just can't figure out if that is the case, why the students are being turned away. Especially, we're really looking for one day a week. Like, I'm kinda like on my knees, like, one day a week, please, so that they can get this full-court advantage, because it is a disadvantage for these children who have worked so hard, y'all, to make this team. I mean, and they're really cute, look at them. They are, and they have worked so hard. So anyways, that's my spiel. I'm hoping that you will please think about this, allow them, I mean, it is, it's our kids, right? It's not like they're coming from Mount Pleasant, it's the school that has no gym. So please think about that. And I do want, I have one other gentleman that would like to come up and speak on behalf of the players. Can I give the floor to him?
Yes, Leah.
He'll keep it under what I do.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Name?
My name is Walton Loftus, and I live on 28th Village Lane, that's also an Isle of Palms. I play basketball for the Sullivan's Island School Team, and I also play for a tennis rec team. I'm here tonight because my Sullivan's Island team would now like to practice at the rec full court. Right now, we practice on a half-court at the Sullivan's Island Baptist Church. I think that the full-court gym could make our team better. We and our parents have all signed these waivers.
Promising young attorney.
We will only use the gym right after school when the rec teams are not practicing or playing. Last year, I played on the SIES tennis team. Our school doesn't have any tennis courts, but Wild Dudes does play on their, on their courts. We're asking the same from the rec. Thank you for considering this for our team.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walton. Just so everybody knows, we have received the emails, and we appreciate it. We forward them on to City Hall and to Recreation, and we will come back with a reply. And thank y'all all for coming and doing such a good presentation.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir, please.
How, hey, guys, wait a second. I'd like to ask my colleagues if there's a way we can expedite this request, at least for interim approval, before we might have to do something more formal.
I think they are working on it right now, and I think it would be inappropriate for us to make such an un-studied decision.
Really? We have to stall time?
It is not on the agenda. It would not be appropriate. However, I have been made aware of all this, of the communications that have been received and sent by the parents. As you all know, we've been working on preparing for tonight's meeting, so it was not on my to-do list today, but I will look into it, talk to Norma Jean, the rec director, and our legal team, and see, you know, what is it that the request entails, and what can we do about it? And I will be contacting them directly.
So I guess what I'm asking is, it seems to be pretty straightforward. I suspect that most of you would want to accommodate them. We shouldn't have to have an active council to do it, but make it an administrative, an administrative action, give the acting administrator some direction to go make this happen before you then come back and we waste another month and we can't accommodate them this month and through the holidays.
I'm gonna defer to our city administrator and to your Recreation Director to come back with a proper reply before we make a decision. Yes. And we understand everybody, you know, I mean, that's my alma mater. Okay, come up, please.
The coaches.
I'm Anna Pandey. I live five blocks from Boulevard, next to the rec department, and we love our rec department. I've lived here for over 20 years. I wrote a letter to you and paneling stranger. And just a couple comments to add is that the court where they practiced at the Baptist Church, they are slippery, it's an old gym, and we're very grateful for them, but as a pediatrician, I do worry. The kids fall on there. I've watched practices, my kid also played last year. And then the other option is the outside courts, which, you know, with the weather in the wintertime is not ideal for the kids. And we are already at disadvantage, because the kids don't have home court. So they do not, we always have to play our home games away at other schools. So all we're asking is for a little bit of practice time. So we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Are the gentlemen in the back the coaches?
No, parents.
There are coach meetings. So a lot of the children also play rec ball, and so some of the coaches are there or at another meeting for the league that Sullivan's Island plays.
Could you tell us who the coaches are?
Sure. Joe Bergstrom and Dennis Hamilton. Dennis is my husband. And Duke, raise your hand. Duke has three other siblings, that's why his mother's not here, but Joe is his father. And they all play rec ball also. And I would like this to everyone these years, as well.
Okay. Thank y'all very much, and y'all did a great presentation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I just clarify, because I think there, you mentioned about the old men's basketball, being able to reserve, just so that that, they are old, but we actually did arrange, you know, I hope everybody knows that the rec center's open Sunday afternoons, and we set aside time for men of a certain age to play, but it's not a particular group, it's open to the entire public. It is, and we may adjust that. But there is also a family time, family and 18 and under time after that, from 3:00 to 5:00, to be able to play on the court.
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, thank y'all for coming tonight, and you will be responded to. Anybody else, citizens? Yes, sir.
I won't take the five minutes. Sam Williams, that sits 47th Avenue. And I just wanna take this time beside John and his professional crew for doing such an excellent job of putting in that emergency at 47th Avenue. A fantastic job.
Any other citizens' comments? Going once, going twice, now, Kitty McKay presentation.
I won't give them more than two minutes.
I think two is plenty. Two is more than enough for this.
One transaction.
Thank you.
I think we should've made the kids stay.
Yes, a civic.
Make a deal, you stay for the honor. Right?
Yeah, right, he might take it on.
Chris, Justin, thank y'all for being here, following basketball. I mean, that's a hard thing to follow, because basketball is important to us.
It's been important all my life, so I get it. Appreciate y'all having us. Justin Kitty with McKay Kitty CPA Club in Mount Pleasant, partner at the Palm. And as you can tell from my voice, it's not doing well, so I've asked Chris Kerr, our audit manager, who you heard from in the Ways and Means Committee, to make this presentation this evening, and to put together a, I call it summarized PowerPoint presentation, because I'll receive it through the audit committee, which you're talking to us in just a few days this year. So, Chris, go ahead.
So I just wanted to give you a little background on our front person. So he's been in the nonprofit area for over 30 years. We have industry experience in nonprofits, as well as in charter schools and municipalities. Charter schools are very similar in the fact that they use government accounting. So we focus on bookkeeping for a lot of charter schools in Charleston area, so that's something where we have that expertise to really understand government accounting. And as Justin mentioned, he's been in this industry for 20 years. He might be in the old men's league. I'm getting there, so I can really talk. I'm studying account for ten. So just a little bit of high level. If you turn to the table of contents, the basically financial statements are in front of you. You have your independent wire report, that's kind of our opinion to the somersault material accuracy of the financial statements. You'll see that there's basic financial statements, which include government-wide financial statements and fund financial statements. We'll go into the differences later, and then there's some other required supplementary information, as well as pending schedules and supplementary information in the back. So if you turn to page one of the financial statements, you'll find our option, our report. At the bottom is our opinion. I want to stress that our opinion was a clean opinion, that's the highest that you can give to anybody in any financial statement that basically says that they were materially accurate. That means that there could've been $5 off here or there, but materially, they were very sound. And I want to also state that we did look, we walked through internal controls, so we didn't test internal controls, since we were in Ways and Means earlier. And then moving on, management discussion analysis. We're going on page four. So this is kind of your financial highlights. This is really to take, it's in between this presentation, which will be about five minutes, and reading these financial statements, which will be hours. This is kinda like, if you wanna really know what's going on, this is kind of the high level information. Just some information that I wanted to bring for us to the council, was that assets exceeded liabilities by $26 million, of which 20 million and 6.1 million were related to the city's government and business-type activities. Total revenues exceeded expenses, resulting in an increase from prior fiscal year of 1.6 million, so that's a healthy increase, and obviously, you want to have higher revenues than expenditures. Cities combined, any governmental funds balance were 16.7 million, a decrease of 690,000 over the prior fiscal year fund balance. Moving on, still on page four. Capital assets additions during the year were 2.9 million, and 1.8 million of this was related to the 45th and 52nd Avenue Drainage Project. Total debt has decreased by a million dollars, and the city's bond rating is still very high, with an AA+ rating in Standard Quarters, and Moody's AA2. Just going over high level, the difference between government-wide and fund financial statements, if you'll turn to page seven of the financials. Their schedule kinda breaks it down very high level as to what the differences are. Some big differences between government-wide and fund financial statements. On your government-wide financial statements, you'll see property, plant, equipment is on there, whereas on the fund financials, you will not see that. You will also not see debt on the fund financial statements. So those, it's just a different basis of accounting, and yeah, it just requires that. Going into page eight, this is also some high-level information, basically from other pages within the financial statements. One thing I did want to focus in on is that you have total unrestricted net assets of 2.216 million, if you look down the bottom right corner. So that's a healthy unrestricted balance to have for the city. And then going on to the changes in the statement of net position on page nine. Wanted to say there was higher revenues and expenses this year, I think Debbie mentioned it, related to the beach restoration. So you had a lot of, you had the FEMA funds and private sector funds that came in, and obviously, funds that were expended on the beach restoration. One thing that I think is important to mention is the disaster recovery funds. Obviously, with hurricanes being so prevalent every year, it seems like we're losing. We wanted to bring it to your attention, just, so we did a study, looked into what other cities are doing, what other entities are recommending. Moody's Investor Services recommends that coastal cities have 10% of their annual operating expenditures in reserves, for natural disaster reserves. The city, so there's some math on here, but essentially, the city has operated 19%. So I think that's a healthy balance. It's good to mention. This year, as part of receiving all the federal funds, there were federal expenditures that were over $750,000, so you're required by federal law to have an audit with regards to those expenditures. So we focused in on that as part of our audit, and that is found on page 84. If you also receive a clean opinion in that area.
84, right in the back. There's a separate report, a separate claim on what they call compliance audit, the government requirements, which goes with that $750,000.
See schedule, finding, even questioning costs. So that's really, if we found any problems with control, if we found any issues that needed to be brought to your attention, that would be kind of where it would be mentioned.
If you have federal funds, you're not complying with the federal dollar requirements, it would be, the actual schedule would be on that schedule as well.
And then lastly, auditors' communications. There were no material audit adjustments, which is a good sign. There are difficulties in hiring. Debbie's really great to work with. The, they get it timely, when we get them, when we ask for information, just timely to get it to us, there's hardly ever any adjustments, so we just wanted to mention that. Pleasure to work with, and so is your team. And so, commend her for that. Had no disagreements with management. No internal control issues during the audit, and we only had one immaterial adjustment that was.
An immature adjustment?
Talking about the disaster, you're talking about cities in general. We are a coastal region. And after Hugo, it took us a number of years, three to five, to get back to where we were. Is that taken into account, that same 10%?
That was, yeah, I was mentioning that it was for coastal cities. I also looked at cities of Booker Tonne and Miami.
Okay, thank you. That's good news.
To clarify, that was the amount that we have in the disaster reserve fund specifically?
So you have disaster, you have a disaster reserve, and you also have unassigned funds, so that's the total?
Total, okay, gotcha.
To get you to 19%.
Okay. That's, I think that's important to note.
Our CPAs is, I can see it coming out of his ears.
Jimmy, if I may, just, and the comment just made about coastal cities, I would presume Mount Pleasant's a coastal city, all these larger communities, but there's no tieback to recoverability, right? I think the thing that we need to keep in mind is our ability to recover financially is very different than a larger entity with commercial ratables and other ways to recover, right? So, you know, I think we need to be really careful when we say that that's enough money for us to recover. We're highly, highly dependent on FEMA funds and no other sourcing.
Right, the larger municipality, right? Yeah. The study says 10%, why being at 19% probably isn't a, isn't a.
Well, we know spending 1.2 million is very easy in beach recovery, but doesn't even scratch the surface of what we need to do each time we have a storm pass us.
You also have to consider a full-service city. We don't run our water and sewer, that's a separate entity. So whereas another city of comparable size, comparable storm, they have to deal with that cost issue, we don't have to deal with that cost issue, as well as a lot of other things, utilities, et cetera, et cetera. We've had this conversation before, I suspect it won't be the last time.
Probably. Any other questions?
Yeah, questions. I'm always concerned about litigation. Page 57, paragraph F, litigation. The city is periodically subject to litigation by a variety of plaintiffs. The city management believes such amounts claimed by these plaintiffs may have applicable insurance coverage or immaterial. What is immaterial to you?
So it's dependent on different funds?
Right.
So different levels?
Yeah.
I don't remember the hand we're on in from our audit files. Can get that to you though.
It's okay.
Materiality.
Right.
As Chris was saying, each, each fund within the financial report obviously generates different materiality levels.
Right.
So 5% or somewhere around there.
Apparently 3% of revenues or something like that.
So you said the disaster recovery is like disaster recovery plus other unencumbered funds? That's how you got the 19%? Because I'm coming up with, we would, 20% would be 3.3 million, but I'll, I'll talk to you about that later, because we got 2.3 in disaster recovery.
Well, I think it's important to point out, if I may, that that calculation is done based on FY '18 expenditure level, which was almost double what it normally is, because it included the beach restoration.
Right.
So if that expenditure level was brought back down to normal levels, the 19% would be high, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not even comparing apples to apples, I'm looking at 1031, 2018, all the cash balances. But, and you know, this was 630, so a couple months off, but it hadn't changed that much. Yeah. That's all I have. Any, yes?
We also have a beach preservation fund. Do other cities have similar, or did you factor that into account at all, in the disaster recovery?
I mean, there are other cities that have that.
Okay. But that didn't factor into the 19% that, your calculations?
Disaster recovery funds.
Any, yes, sir?
Let me, we introduced a new software program. Was that covered in this entire fiscal year that was audited, or did that come in during part of it?
So we went live on with PSN like in November, so midway through the. So we went live on with PSN like in November, so midway through the.
Okay. I'm curious of your comment or yours about the software, how did it affect your audit? Was it an improvement?
Yeah, I would say it made it a lot easier too. And that was one of the reasons that we, you know, we would send Laura requests and she did it same day, because it was all, you know, it was all tied up pretty well.
Great, that's good.
And Debbie was just hoping to, you know, have books this accurate to go through major software evaluation. But I had, yeah, sure wasn't as easy as, you know, the P and L. But it's just pretty impressive.
Well, that's particularly impressive, giving a transitional year, because we all know how that can be impacted, so it should be even better next year.
Yeah, Debbie should be congratulated.
So since we're giving out rounds of applause.
And renovating the house at the same time. Any other questions? Hearing none, thank y'all very much for a great presentation. Understanding committees, up front, Ways and Means.
Well, I'm just going to be real brief, because we just went over everything, and then I'm going to let you present the motions. Barring Debbie's key indicators, general fund revenues are expected levels with some exceptions, book, sales tax, state aid tax, and aid subdivision payments are one month behind, that would usually be at this time of year, because simply because checks from the state were later. Timely difference will correct itself in November. Would be important to note, the business license building department revenues are significantly ahead of prior year, and due not to include, to your question, license permit fees related to the large project in Wild Dunes. Revenues, other funds, tourism funds are tracking about the prior year, total increase over prior year's $182,000. Cash position is approximately $450,000 higher than last month, but significantly below fiscal year '18 due to spending on the offshore beach restoration project. Current indicators are that the general fund expenditures will be within budget for the year. Spending in capital projects and tourism funds have been slow to start. Several large budgeted projects, purchases have had significant spending, including public safety building renovations, drainage outfalls, radio replacements, and the fire truck, fire ladder truck replacement. All these projects are expected to commence this year. Other notables, in red, which is good red. Today, the city received a check for $500,000, which is 100% of the rural infrastructure grant order related to Phase 2 drainage. These revenues are included in the capital project fund budget for fiscal year '19. Congratulations to staff. And I'll let you take it from there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Consideration of the use of a metal detector with a trained attendant in the presence of an armed police officer for Ways and Means committee meetings and city council meetings with an estimated annual cost of $3,500 to be found in general fund, page nine, 55, general government professional services, page 12, 70. This is recommended by our police chief. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And nays?
No.
Seven, two?
Ted.
Okay, number two was duck on Ford, asked for coyote management. Consideration of award of contract to Thomas and Hutton in amount of $10,108,000 for Phase 2, 3 drainage, Phase 2, 3, project. Capital funds, fund, public works drainage contingency, outfall improvements, it was described that this is just the first few steps in this process. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous? Consideration of improvement engagement letter from McKay Kitty LLC in amount of $10,000 to perform certain accounting tasks with Marina tenants. I believe that was increased to $20,000.
Up to.
Up to $20,000. Do I hear a form of a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nays? Unanimous? Consideration of approval of a proposal from Hill Construction in amount of $17,000 to perform a detailed assessment of the restaurant building at De Marina. Again, this is under professional service, absorbed and remaining balance of 51,500. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? We got one nay. Consideration of approval for the Marina manager to increase the non-residential launch passes to an amount not to exceed $500.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Nays? Recommendation for ATAX, the first one was denied to Ways and Means, the second one was a consideration of an approval for sponsorship for the 2019 Family Circle Junior Tennis Championships in amount of $5,000. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous? And so ends the Ways and Means.
Number eight.
Number eight, too.
Number eight, I got.
I watch shop around here.
I got my other. Oh, thank you.
There it is.
Thank you, that's the other one. Consideration appraisal report for 1100 Palm Boulevard to authorize the staff to finalize the transfer of said property. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion?
We only need to read the motion. And with the, who read the motion?
He just wanted to hear me read this. I move to authorize staff to proceed with drafting an ordinance to convey 858 square feet of Pavilion Boulevard as shown on the survey done by Mr. Wade dated October 2, 2018, and described and appraised in the report of Mr. Hartnett dated November 20, 2018, for a payment of $10,725 plus appraisal cost payable to the city.
And there is a plat under everybody's. So, any discussions beyond that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. That ends Ways and Means. I got so many agendas here. Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met Monday, November 5 at City Hall with Council members Bell, Ward, and myself, along with our interim city administrator, police and fire chiefs, and our city clerk. We first started our meeting with a presentation and discussion of a proposed cancer benefit bike ride, Lo Velo, that is being planned for November 2, 2019, to support MUSC's Hollings Cancer Center. Dr. Gustavo Leon, director of the cancer center, spoke about the center, which is ranked 24th in the nation for its cancer clinical care, and their goal of establishing additional research centers throughout the state. Joining him were Janet Bolan, event executive director of the event, of the fundraiser, and representatives from Metalist Sports, who will manage the operations surrounding the event. They are planning for a large annual event that will showcase the Charleston area and include rides of 25, 50, and 100 miles. They will not be asking to close any roads on Isle of Palms. They are looking at some different routes that could have them traveling through Isle of Palms from either Sullivan's Island or Mount Pleasant. None of the routes would have them stopping on Isle of Palms. Our committee voted to have the city's chiefs meet with the ride organizers to work out logistics and return back to the committee with recommendations. We had a parking report from Stan Tech's Rick Day and Stuart Day, and they talked about, they delivered a presentation on public beach parking availability that covered the impact of our recent changes to Palm Boulevard between 21st and 40th avenues, where we are now clearly prohibiting double parking and requiring parallel parking on the non-ocean side rather than perpendicular parking. And you all should have gotten in your email a, copies of the documents that correspond with that, including a graphic that I think hopefully neatly lays out things out, but to hit the highlights. When they laid out all of the possible parking spaces in that stretch of Palm Boulevard that we're talking about, taking note of driveways, trees, fire hydrants, et cetera, they counted a potential for up to 430 perpendicular spaces. Now, that's a much greater number than many of us may have expected, because the current comprehensive beach plan, which was adopted in 2017, after the introduction of managed beach parking, estimated public beach parking spaces on that stretch of Palm at around 357. So in fact, when Stan Tech, in their latest count, looked at the area closely with parallel parking in mind, they counted 356 spaces, I believe. So it appears that the previous count for the comprehensive beach plan was done with the expectation of parallel parking, which may not be clear, have been clear in the reporting on that, with the expectation of parallel parking on the non-ocean side of Palm, perhaps because this is what previous councils and our police department had expected or intended to get to eventually, anyway. So by going from perpendicular spaces on the non-ocean side of Palm, which has become the norm in recent years, and officially changing to require parallel parking, Stan Tech estimates a reduction of 74 public beach parking spaces on that stretch. However, on paper, when compared to the numbers from the comprehensive beach plan, there's essentially no reduction in the count. We're still at a max capacity of 356 on that stretch, which is close to or around twice the required amount of 190 expected parking spaces along Palm Boulevard from 21st to 41st. To help explain the information you were given, the required parking calculations on the handout are related to the type of access points that we provide in those areas. It shows what we are now providing after the recently implemented changes versus what's required. Islandwide, including the city's municipal lots and Charleston County Parks and Recreation Commission lots, we provide 1,582 public beach parking spots, which is nearly three times what's required for the type of access points and parks that we have. Wild Dunes is not listed in the handout because there are no beach access points provided to the general public from Wild Dunes. The graph shows that we may have leeway to reduce public beach parking spaces in other areas of the island, for example, if we want to make changes because of safety concerns. From breach inlet to 10th Avenue, required parking is exceeded by 27 spaces. From 10th to 21st, it's exceeded by 763 spaces because of our parking lots that are provided. And from 41st to 57th, it's exceeded by 61 spaces. For anyone who wants to know more about that, you can study the provided materials, which for the public are available in the November Public Safety Committee meeting packet, and also online on iop.net, and you can also listen to the audio of the presentation during the committee's meeting. We also had an update on coyotes. To correct the record from our committee's October meeting, the interim administrator reported that $1,189 have been spent year-to-date relative to coyote management of our $15,000 budgeted for fiscal year '19. In October, six soft leg traps and one collarum trap were set in the marsh area along the 6th Fairway on the Harbor Course, and they ensnared five raccoons. In total, the city has trapped five coyotes in a little more than a year, as well as three have been killed by automobiles. Field cameras have been deployed near the 8th tee box on the Harbor Course, based on sightings in those areas, and additional cameras have been deployed at the rear of Back Bay Drive and at the end of Dune Ridge Lane. Mating season for the coyotes has started, and the police department is working towards sharing data with the island coyote collision to map coyote hotspots. Wild Dunes is no longer trapping, but is allowing the city to set some traps there. And let's see, moving on, we had an update on Isle of Palms Public Transit Initiative. Our interim administrator gave us another promising update on iop public transit. The Council of Governments, known as COG, continues analyzing the responses to a stakeholder survey distributed in September, with the initial 17 responses suggesting there is interest in providing the service amongst employers for their employees, and the COG is confident that they can have a pilot program running for the 2019 beach season.
That's awesome.
We discussed security at council meetings, which we've already covered, and our committee unanimously voted to recommend an updated statewide mutual aid agreement, which the city has signed on to for several years. The update requires each participant to notify its insurance carrier of the agreement and for the insurance provider to approve the city's participation in it. In addition, the insurance provider shall provide a letter to the insured stating that it authorizes the participant to provide and receive assistance under the terms of the mutual aid agreement and indicate that no lapse in insurance coverage shall occur for employees, vehicles, or liability. The mutual aid agreement applies primarily to fire assistance, and it allows the city to provide or receive assistance from all local governments in the state. Currently, the city has individual mutual aid agreements with Sullivan's Island and Charleston County, which is a countywide agreement compared to statewide agreement. The city has received a required letter from its insurance provider, and I believe this is something that we need to address now with the vote, and I'm not sure.
Yes, sir. So what we'll do is have a motion to do a mutual aid agreement. You've explained it very well, thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make that motion?
You make that motion, you have a second. You made a second, okay. Again, this agreement originated in 2000, so the city is a signatory early on. The agreement provides, as Chair said, fire district, fire protection, emergency service to provide mutual aid assistance upon request at the time of a significant incident, fire, earthquake, hurricane, flood, tornado, hazardous materials event, other disaster. Is there any questions concerning this from anyone on council? Hearing none. Do I hear approval, say aye, signify by saying yea?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just. Any nays? It carries unanimously, I'm sorry about that.
He just returned from Ireland.
Yeah.
And I have one more thing. Just an update on the multi-use path. Our interim administrator gave us an update on our plans to have design and engineering done to improve the multi-use path on Waterway Boulevard. She has, she had invited the engineer who oversaw the 28th Avenue sidewalk project to join her for a look at the multi-use path and advise if Charleston County's engineering department would be able to do that work for the city, possibly at a lower cost to the city than a private firm. We are waiting to hear more on that, and on the possibility that Charleston County could not do the work, our interim administrator has begun to work on an RFP for the design and engineering for the project. Finally, the committee discussed holding its 2019 meetings at 10:00 AM the first Monday of each month.
So ends your report.
So ends my report.
I do have an update to add related to the multi-use path on Waterway Boulevard. Since that meeting, the Charleston County Public Works Department, their engineering crew has been, has visited the multi-use path, and I am waiting on a report and an assessment with recommendations about what we can do.
Great update, thank you. Public Works.
That's me. Who knew mutual aid could be so fun?
Going back to Ireland.
Right. Public Works, we had a long, very fruitful meeting, so this is longer than normal minutes, I'm just warning you. We met on November 8. Present were myself and Councilmember Buchanan, as well as appropriate city staff. Councilmember Kinghorn was out of town. Previous months' minutes were approved, and there were no citizens' comments. We adjusted the agenda to hear a new business first, and under new business, we were presented the Phase 3 drainage contract from Thomas and Hutton. There were three representatives from Thomas and Hutton at the meeting who walked us through the contract and indicated what each representative will be responsible for. We discussed the goals of the work, the challenges of the permitting process, and the timeline. The first phase, which we approved tonight, is the engineering investigative work, and then Thomas and Hutton will come back to the city with several options and cost estimates. At this point, we will determine the direction we want to take. At this point, we will determine the direction we want to take, and then the project will be shovel-ready. At that point, we would enter into another contract for construction, so just to get everybody on the same page for that. We then, again, reordered our agenda and discussed the memorandum of understanding between the city and Isle of Palms Water and Sewer Commission. Thomason Hutton representative, Mark Yodas, who had previously talked to us about the Phase III drainage, also presented the above, sorry, is working closely on the extension of the sewer lines on Isle of Palms. The package should be complete in the next month, and once it's complete, there will be a scheduled meeting with us and Isle of Palms Water and Sewer, so it's a work in progress. But I just, again, we are working toward this, and a lot, a lot going on, but it's good, we're really making progress. Next, we had departmental reports. Director Pitts reported garbage was down slightly and debris collections were nearly the same as last year. Highlights, and they are big highlights, Yay Donny, or the 42nd and 31A beach access paths. New matting has been installed in the shale to keep the matting firm and, and what's next? And flat. If you have not gone out to see these paths, I encourage you to go see how inviting they are. Bravo, Public Works team. Another round of applause. I mean, they really are awesome, so please go look at them, I mean, it's a huge difference. All beach access paths were mowed, and the rights away from 21st to 41st was mowed. Edies has started open ditch maintenance, y'all have probably seen them around, and vehicle maintenance is within budget. Now, we went back to old business and Phase II drainage. The crew is working its way down 49th, and the reimbursement process was in, was in process, so now we know that's been received, so that's awesome, and I believe we still have a completion expectation of mid-December for that project.
I am not aware of any other delays.
Yay, so that's coming, be mid-December before we know it. Underground storage tanks at Public Works, I am so happy to report, the tanks are stamped with approval and dispensing fuel. So yay, hallelujah for that.
Another big one.
Another big one, I mean, that has been forever. Next, not so, not making so much progress, trash cans with lids for the beach. So we asked the vendor for a sample to try, and we were turned down. So each can costs $300. It's just something, we do understand they're compatible with our existing equipment. We have requested that the vendor bring one, or at least send one to our next meeting so we can see them. My concern is that if the holes in the garbage, garbage cans aren't large enough, then people won't put large garbage into the trash can. So, I mean, we just need a visual, and a $300 can for as many cans, I mean, even if we just start them at front beach, it's a huge number. So it's, it's a great, it would be great, but we need to see them, so we're trying, so they're supposed to get back to us. Next, we went to our ditch dive. So several ditches on the island were discussed. The highlight, and again, this is a good one, we're closing out the year on high, is at 3232 Avenue, the Burke Ditch, which we all know very well now. After two years, there is progress, and the county is improving and stabilizing the ditch, and the work will likely be done in January. So that is major, because that's been a long time coming. Okay. Next is consideration of assigning the city's contract with Shup Enterprises to J.L.G. Enterprises. Mr. and Mrs. Gairles, who are actually here tonight in the back, live on Isle of Palms and have been trained on the equipment with Bill Shup and understand the job. They have a business called Chunky's that rents beach chairs and umbrellas on the island, so they are on the beach daily, and we made a motion to assign the contract to J.L.G. Enterprises with a one-year probationary period, so I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Do we have a motion to transfer Bill Shup's contract, beach maintenance services, to Chunky's Chairs and Umbrellas? We have a motion, do we have a second? Second, any discussion?
And again, this is with a one-year probationary period, I just...
Which is through November 19th, 2019?
Yes.
Any other...
It would be from the date of the execution of the assignment.
For one year.
For one year.
Any other discussion?
I have a question, just to clarify, so this is not an RFP because, and maybe you can explain, because this is more of a transfer...
Right, this is transferring a business from Mr. Shup to, it's, it's an existing contract.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, and here's the fun part, all those in favor signify by saying, "Yea."
Yay.
Any nays? Unanimous.
All right.
I'm just making it fun.
Yes, you are. Next, consideration of expanding the Isle of Palms plastics ban. I put this on the agenda to direct our interim city attorney to determine the differences between our current ordinance banning single-use plastic bags and the new ordinances that have been passed by our neighboring communities, because if all the communities are on the same page, I believe the ban will have a greater impact. And I don't know if Attorney Copeland, do you have any update on the plastics?
Hopefully, this meeting...
No.
No?
This will be presented as they're going to be.
In January, perfect, okay, great. Beach access paths, we discussed 42nd and 31A earlier. We discussed, Director Pitts thinks 38A could be improved to be more handicap accessible. We have the Mobi mat in stock, so it only requires sand shale and grading, and again, improving our beach accesses was a high priority at the visioning workshop, so we asked that he go forward with that. And then we discussed consideration of increasing the greenery's contract to include mowing and maintaining some of our beach access paths during the high-season months, March 1st to August 31st. This would include 10 of the most heavily utilized paths. Cost is $450 a month, we have the funds in the budget. With twice-a-week garbage in the summer, garbage collection and debris collection is all Public Works can handle. So we thought that was a very fair price for mowing 10 of the, and keeping up 10 of our beach access paths. Next, 40-Fat-First Avenue Edies work. Edies cleaned out the ditch on 41st. There is a broken pipe under marginal road. The pipe will be vacuumed out, so we can look at it with a camera. We do believe the original gate valve is in disrepair, and we'll have David Stevens look at it, and the road above the pipe is cracked, so it could be more problematic, so it's sort of a to-be-continued. Our next meeting is Thursday, January 3rd at 9:00 AM. Happy holidays, and this ends my report.
Great report, thank you so much. Recreation, yes, ma'am?
A quick update related to 21st Avenue and damage type on marginal road. Donny was with Edies there yesterday evaluating that, so we should, we should be getting a proposal back from them soon.
Oh, good, okay.
So they've already seen the pipe and have some proposed next steps. See whether or not we're looking at a damaged section of that pipe that's visible, or we're looking at a major, a greater...
Problem.
And I have...
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Just a comment about the mowing. I have gotten an earful from at least one resident about the need for more mowing during the summer months to keep those paths safe and accessible.
For sure, I mean...
And so I would encourage that, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, recreation.
Perfect. Thanks, Ms. Mara. The Recreation Committee met on November 13th at 5:00 PM. All committee members were present and appropriate staff. Under First Order Business, the director gave a report and stated that adult athletics are in full swing, we have softball, basketball, soccer, and table tennis. We have acting performance workshop that will end this Thursday, November 29th, with a performance beginning at 5:30. The director also reported that there was a great crowd that gathered for our ghostly tide tales on October 19th, and the Halloween carnival was a huge success, and hopefully everybody was able to make it. I was there. So, as always, and the annual city pumpkin carving contest was taken by City Hall again. But upcoming events include movie and dodgeball, which would be November 28th. Our annual Holiday Street Festival would be this Saturday, December 1st, from 2:00 to 7:00, with entertainment for all ages. And moving on, under Old Business, we discussed the RFP for the repair of tennis courts that were opened on November 15th, which will be discussed at our next meeting. We also had an update on providing Wi-Fi at the rec center within the building and within the grounds of the property. Because of the expense at this time, we're going to put that on the agenda for our budget Under miscellaneous business, we had, well, it's listed wrong, the wrong name was here, but Marshall had showed up to ask about surfing at the, the surf camp that we've been working on, so...
What's that?
The franchise. The franchise agreement, so, and that's still in the works with the city attorney and the administration. But our next meeting day is Tuesday, January 7th at the conference room, and that is it for my agenda, my meeting, so...
You get to work for the shortest presentation, thank you very much. Personnel?
This will not be short. Okay, your personnel committee was very busy during November. We had a regular meeting on November 1st, we had an additional meeting on November 13th, and another meeting on November 16th. So I will only cover what is in your packet and just give you synopsis of the other two. Minutes were approved, no citizen comments were forwarded. Old Business, after action for employee recognition event, unanimous agreement that the event was a success, and the second annual event should be planned for 2019. The Mercer brochures, after a very rocky start, the brochures are being edited, and the call for resumes should commence in December. An update on developing a policy for increases for long-term employees who are at the top of their salary range. In light of financial analysis received yesterday, this topic will be revisited at our December meeting. It'll also be considered in a broader context in the budget workshop discussion in December. New Business, the consideration of appointments, reappointments to boards and commissions. These will be presented to council for approval at the special meeting in December. We also had a discussion of city administrator defined, as defined in the city code, and discussion of the role of chief of police as defined in the IOP city code. Since we're actively seeking new employees in both of these positions, we wanted to look at the code and make sure that all of that language was up to date, and so in your packet on pages 63 and 64 are those changes. Now, I'm not sure that we need to have an approval at this point, or do we approve the code all at once when we get all of the changes done?
You all would be approving the language?
The language to...
It would be prepared in the form of an ordinance?
Okay.
That would be presented for first reading for, at the following city council meeting.
Okay, so I add, I move that the language on page 63 and 64 of your packet referring to city administrator and chief of police be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion, everybody have seen the red line version and strikeouts and any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, sing five by saying, "Yea."
Yay.
You've got to be aware of, all right, and all those opposed, nay? Hearing none, passes none.
Thank you very much, and that will be put in the form of an ordinance. We then moved to an update on the RFE process for city attorney and assistant city attorney. The RFPs were approved, responses were received, and interviews took place on November 13th, that was our other meeting. Again, the recommendations will be made at the special council meeting on December 6th for both the attorney position and the assistant attorney position. We then moved into a discussion of employee evaluations for 2018. The personnel committee agrees that our current system of tying evaluation and merit together is not the best practice. However, for this calendar year, we're unable to make changes. And it's our intent before the next calendar year that we will have a modernized method of encouraging growth and performance, but not tied to salary increases. One of the major responsibilities of each of us on council is to participate in the evaluation of the city administrator. We have an anomaly this year in that we have an interim city administrator who has been in the position for six months. However, the committee felt that it was our responsibility to give her comments as to her performance to date. So I ask that you take a packet and pass it on, they have your names on it. In the past, we have had some council members who said, "I never got the evaluation, I never got the form," so I am assuring that everybody on council is receiving the evaluation and receiving the form. There is a letter of explanation in that this is a six-month evaluation. One of the topics on this evaluation is a goal set by council. You will omit that question, that is question number 21. Also, I understand that for some of you, this is the very first time you've done this evaluation. If there are topics that you feel that you do not have full knowledge of, or do not feel that you can properly evaluate our interim city administrator on that topic, please put an X so that I know you have considered that topic, but you just don't feel that you can answer it. And then the calculation will be based on the number of questions that you did answer. So rather than 20, it may be 15, or 18, or 19, whatever you have answered. Also, the committee is asking that for every topic you give a comment, whether you give a five, or you give a one, please allow the city administrator to know what's your comments, why you gave that particular evaluation. That is not the instructions on the evaluation sheet, but we're asking as much as possible that this be a performance review for growth, not something that, that says, "Okay, here's a five, or here's a one, here's a three." We really want you to think as possibly as you can. If you have questions, don't hesitate to call me, I'll try to explain as much as I can if you have questions on it. The deadline we've set is noon December 14th. If you'll simply put this packet back into my mailbox, I will calculate it out confidentially. I will then make an appointment with Desiree, and she and I will sit down, and I will share with her all of your, your evaluations and your comments so that she can grow in her position. Any questions?
That was a tough one.
Yeah, that was a tough one.
So we can do it on paper or electronically?
Yes, I'm sorry, if you want it electronically, please just contact, probably Winnett or Marie?
For the form?
For the form.
We can split it.
Yeah, just contact the administration, and they, they can get it to you electronically and get it back electronically. Any questions on the evaluation? Great, okay. We then went to a discussion of citizen advisory committees. The initial discussion concerning how to best utilize the wealth of knowledge existing on our island, it was emphasized to us as we interviewed various peoples for our boards and commissions, we have such a plethora of experience on this island. We have folks that could really help each and every committee, however, we know that there has to be a process. So we've asked administration to look into, rather than forming any other committees or commissions, to look at ad hoc committees of the existing committees. If in fact we have a project in personnel, that we have a defined task with a time limit and a work product due, then we could ask folks in the community to apply to be on that ad hoc committee, because we really think that, we've heard from our visioning session, that folks want to be involved, but we have to have a process. So we will be working on that before we bring it back up. Hopefully, this will be, may be part of our strategic planning early next year, how we actually involve more citizens in ad hoc committees, because they're, they're ready to do it. Strategic planning for 2019, we all recognize the need for a strategic plan, but we know that we have a budgeting workshop that takes priority. We do need a strategic plan other than just our comprehensive plan, and hopefully, in the first quarter of next year, we can set about doing that. And I had... And I had, our strategic plan just may be drainage, drainage, and drainage, but we need to at least sit down and decide what the strategic plan for drainage is in that capacity. Okay, the next meeting is set for December sixth at 5:00 PM, but we may have additional meetings in terms of working with Mercer. Those brochures are being edited, and we should be getting resumes in December. So that may mean we have to meet before the December sixth. We have current vacancies by department. The police department, the chief of police is in progress, and we also need two sworn officers. Fire department is fully staffed. Public works, we're in search of one public works assistant director. Recreation, we have some part-time openings that are posted on the website. In building, we are fully staffed. City hall, of course, we're in search of a city administrator. And last but not least, the October Safety Sweepstakes winners, recreation department is Weston Smith. Police department, Charles Forsyth. Fire department, Brandon Crisp. And public works, George Myers. And that is my report.
Thank you very much, it's a long report. Questions?
Do we need to approve the longevity increase adjustment proposal?
No, we said that we were going to wait on that because of the amount of data that we just received yesterday. We'll bring it back to personnel committee, and then we'll bring it back, probably as part of the budgeting process, rather than just from personnel.
Okay. All right, just, sorry.
Any other questions? Hearing none, moving on to real property.
Okay, the real property committee met at nine AM Wednesday, November seventh. Council members, Ferentz Ward and myself were there, as well as interim administrator, attorney Copeland and clerk Copeland. We approved the previous minutes meetings, there were no citizens' comments. The only comments from marina tenants, tidal wave watersports asked for as-built drawings so that they could be compliant with the DEHEC request for their operations manual, which we, of course, agreed to provide to them. On old business, we had the update on eleven hundred Palma right-of-way, but we've handled that already. Good news, one item left to talk about. Discussion of alternatives available to optimize municipal parking lot on Pavilion Drive. This discussion, it was originally brought up by council member Kinghorn, could we look at alternative uses for that parking lot in the off months? Council member Ward suggested that there may be some deed restrictions, which we've since learned there are some deed restrictions. And it's been sent back to administration and our attorney to understand exactly what those deed restrictions allow us to do or not to with that piece of property. Update on marina tenant operations and financial review, we've already had that discussion earlier with McKay Kitty. There was discussion on the unregulated portion of the public right-of-way on Forty-First Avenue outside of the lease marina property. When council approved resident-only parking on Forty-First, it was the entirety of Forty-First as either under the control of SE DOT or owned by the city. The signed plan didn't match one hundred percent of council's, what I believe to be council's intent. However, those spaces that we could potentially sign are being used by the marina operator, particularly for large trailer turnaround, and there are some public safety implications to just taking those away. And we've been in discussions with Brian Barrigan, the marina operator, as to providing the city alternative compensatory parking spaces or some other plan, and we'll continue to have those. They've been proactive and good discussions with Brian, so we'll keep moving that forward through the real property committee. Update on the marina docks rehabilitation project. I might ask for help on this one. This one's a little more complicated, so as you'll recall, we acknowledged that we needed to understand exactly what work needed to be done on the docks. This is safety remediation, dock repair, and we went out and had ATM and Kirby Marshall, since he had a history of other work down there, look at what we could do or what would be proposed to do. And he came back with a phased plan. The first phase would be the fuel dock and Morgan Creek docks. The slips behind the store were designed to hold two boats and have a finger on each side of the slip, giving each boat access to one. He informed the committee that we're replacing these docks, and kind will make the regulatory process simpler. So again, I want to try to explain if, and again, it would be great if we had a picture up here. If you're looking at the Morgan Creek Grill and the boat launch area, I think we all understand where the fuel docks are. That's a pretty convoluted area there, because there is access into the boat launch area almost as a consequence of the way that's laid out next to the Morgan Creek Grill. So there was a Phase One proposal that came in roughly at one point two, two, five million dollars, and I'm approximating, I'm not reading from my notes. Council member Ferentz said, you know, is there some combination of Phase One and Phase Two that might give us a hybrid, where we could still eliminate that traffic congestion point, if you will, on the boat launch, but save the city some money by not separating that in its entirety and not doing the full Phase One? So Desiree, please help me with this piece. We did get an alternative proposal that came back, I think roughly a hundred thousand dollars less, but still alleviated the traffic problem of boats entering into the boat launch area from the Morgan Creek Grill area.
Correct. It is a combination, Concept Three, which takes into account the feedback from the committee, particularly some really good points that council member Ferentz made. I don't have the drawing in front of me, so I can't refer to it. But in terms of, it's a combination of both Concept One and Concept Two, and roughly the estimated cost remains the same as in Concept One, which is a lower cost. There were some other questions. I'm assuming that the committee will be evaluating this new concept. You all have not had a chance, you received the communication from me. You all have not had a chance to discuss it amongst yourselves. I've also asked Kirby Marshall to contact all of the marina tenants to get their feedback. That had not been done with Concept One and Two, which were presented at the last meeting. So I'm expecting that conversation and that feedback to be before us by the next real property meeting in January.
And I think for this meeting tonight and this process, I could go through a lot of detail of what these phases are. We need to concentrate on what could be done in the next budget year, and start looking at, is there monies we could allocate, would to be spread over multiple budget years? But I think the number in Phase One that everyone should keep in mind is somewhere in the one point one, one point two million dollar range. The additional work that was looked at are the finger piers along the Morgan Creek Grill. We know they're short, they're-
The intercoastal.
Yes, on the intercoastal side, correct, Carol. And also, there was an opinion that we're not fully ADA compliant on the dock that's now being used by tidal wave watersports as well. So we're putting those aside for current budget discussions, in all likelihood focusing on the real needs, which are the fuel dock, which we all know we need to get on as quickly as possible.
Will we get drawings?
Yes, I can supply that, that they're included in the real property committee packet that's online, but I will submit, I'll supply all of that to you all.
One question. With the two different things that he gave us, the one actually had us push that outside dock into Morgan Creek further. But by combining one and two, we were able to move it back, so you don't have to have that, and that eliminates all that permitting. And there was also another little finger dock at the bottom that we don't need. So by kind of simplifying things, it makes it much easier to come in and out, and it doesn't interfere with that launch area at all. That will be totally cut off from it. So we hope that that will make a big difference. What I don't know, and I don't have my notes, the one point two does not include the fuel dock, right? Or does it?
So Phase One, which is the area of the fuel dock, that's seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Just that portion.
Without any grant funding whatsoever.
Right.
And then Phase Area B of Phase One, which is still that area within the Morgan Creek Grill.
Right.
That's five hundred and thirty.
Okay, so it is a combination of one point two. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't another seven hundred on top of it. Because remember, we're going to be doing the underground fuel tanks.
Right.
That's six hundred thousand dollars. So we have a six hundred thousand dollar underground tank, and then another seven hundred thousand dollars in the fuel dock. So that's a big amount of money.
But to tear it up twice makes-
But I asked that question.
Makes just-
I asked that question in terms of what we could do to combine the things.
Could I request that for our next meeting, we have it, so we could see it large, I mean, even if it's just a hard copy?
Absolutely agree.
Easel? Okay.
And we should have the agenda, and the citizen should be able to see it.
Right.
I guess the reason why it's not included, the committee has not made any final decision. They're still discussing among all the three different concepts, but I apologize, I can send that off.
Yeah, I still think it would be helpful, because the graphics-
It's so hard to-
Yeah, the picture is worth a thousand words.
Fortunately, we're all kind of familiar with marinas, so we can relate to it. But I think for the public as well, it'd be good if they could see what we're talking about. I think the good news is we're making progress, talking about the right issues down there, and, you know, trying to move forward with a plan that gets us on track.
I have another question. So we're not moving the fuel tank?
No.
No.
Because that was?
No.
No, it's not being moved.
And why is that not? Because it seemed like that was a real goal. I'm just curious.
But there was never any discussion since I've been on this committee of moving the fuel docks, so I can't answer that.
The discussion has been about repairing it.
Right, but I thought that it was, there were a lot of reasons to move it.
I think that the instruction that we have received from the real property committee is to contain the repairs within the existing footprint, and repair in kind, not an overall or-
It's not a remodel.
It's not a remodel, but to look at what needs to be done to prepare and make it ADA compliant.
Okay, I just don't, I mean, I think if it need, if there's a vast improvement in the way it works, because that is one of the issues with the launch, is, you know, and at one point two million, it might be about the same. I mean, anyway, I just think it should be, there should, look at why it was gonna, just the whys.
Why it wasn't moved?
Right.
Oh, it cost.
Right.
As a cost issue, I mean, the simple fact is-
Where would it be moved to?
The referendum didn't go through, and we're looking at fixing.
Anyway, just, you can consider it. It was close, it was all gonna tie in with moving, doing the tanks, and, anyway.
Yeah, I think that-
Okay.
Yeah, not optional.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next subject was the, let me make sure I'm where I want to be. In new business, status of design build RFP for remediation of the public safety building. And I will let Desiree give us an update on this. I think we're-
We have completed that project, and we will be, we expect the proposals back by December twentieth. It will go before real property for a recommendation of approval.
In January.
In January, at the January seventh meeting. Moving forward.
The status, item B, status and intended process for marina restaurant lease RFP, we went through that in the prior meeting, and have voted to move forward with getting a fairly deep forensic analysis of what we're dealing with before we go out to RFP on that, with an anticipation that we'll have those responses back from Hill in the February, latter part of February. Update on removal and replacement of the underground storage tanks at the IOP Marina. So Carol has now passed the wand from public works over to this one.
Talk about it every month.
Before the work begins in January, a pre-construction meeting will be held with the interim administrator, Douglas Kerr, and director Pitts, the marina tenants, and the contractor to iron out logistical matters. I don't know if that has happened yet.
That meeting has not happened, but it's scheduled for December.
Okay, thank you. We've already handled the consideration of increasing the non-resident yearly decal. For those that weren't in the earlier meeting, this was at the request of the marina operator to have the discretion to raise the annual launch fees for non-residents to five hundred dollars, and that passed unanimously. Consideration of creating a citizen advisory committee. This falls under the same conversation that council member Ferentz just had. We're certainly in favor of anything that helps us do better in gauging the public, but we'll defer and see what we come up with as those issues get worked through the administration and the legal process. And there was no miscellaneous business. And our next meeting, and this is, change as well, will be beginning in January at nine AM, January second. There's been discussion with limited amount of public involvement in these meetings that, because we're asking businesses, in our case, the businesses do attend that are active, they prefer the morning hours, and we're able to accommodate those morning hours and comply with the business wishes. And with that, we adjourn. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes. When you spoke, Randy, about the front beach parking lot, you talked about it being off months. Is the committee considering only off months option or year-round?
No, I think, I think it's, I think it's open to year-round. The discussion came up as a consequence of off months, but I think when we look at the broader picture, that we're open to ideas that help.
So just to reemphasize for the committee's benefit, and I would ask that you continue to investigate this, we've got approximately, as you all know, four acres, very valuable property at Front Beach. It's only used for parking, and five months of the year, it draws very little revenue. The suggestion was, as you and I discussed, which is common practice, you either engage a consultant and ask them, what's the best use of your property or facility? Or you go out with a request for information to the business community. You define what your requirements are, but see what they can do in addition to. For instance, retail space, housing, park, something that's interactive. And if proposals come back to council that are desirable for discussion, you then determine which direction you might go in a public-private partnership. The value of the land, of course, is our contribution or involvement. The business model allows it to be financed. Some of our most interesting towns and cities throughout the state have unique public-private partnerships and common space that are creative. And that's where you get some real excitement, some livability, increases business downtown, our downtown, and especially, of course, for our needs in the off-season. So I hope that the committee investigates that.
Completely agree. The issue here are the deed restrictions that say that we can only use it for recreation purposes, and if, which parking is considerable, and because it's providing beach access. However, if we were to eliminate that, and I'm just offering this for thought and discussion, you would have to have a like property available to do this, which we don't have on the island. Now, that begs the question, if you had parking with a facility above the parking, are you still complying to the deed restrictions? And this is why I'm not an attorney, and we have an attorney, and when she comes back and lets us know what we can do, we will have further discussion around what the possibilities are.
Who has these restrictions on it? Is it ourselves?
Yes, it was when we, they could be changed, too.
So it's our, if it's ourselves-
It's not just ourselves.
It's voters.
It's the, also restrictions placed on the entity that provided funding for the city to purchase this property.
So-
The answer is, stay tuned. We're pursuing all avenues to understand what we can do.
Pursuing legal is important, and that's helpful. And recreation is but one item that could be included, but it is certainly worth the effort to determine what we can and cannot do.
That's exactly right.
As you would with any other asset. Thank you.
Okay, hearing nothing else, moving on to reports from city officers, boards, commissions, accommodations, tax advisory committee, minutes are in process. Board of zoning appeals, no meeting in November. Planning commission, minutes in process. Reports-
Can I have a quick update for-
Of course, we'd love to have it.
Absolutely, Douglas.
Thank you. Very quick.
Two minutes.
Sure. I just wanted to foreshadow that the plan, as you all know, you've just finalized the last step of getting Thomas and Hutton on board to work in a very focused project at the outfalls. At the last planning commission meeting, they really talked about, you know, once those outfalls, once that work is underway and that design work is underway, what would be the logical kind of next steps in putting the pieces together to really work on the island's drainage system in its entirety? So they, at their last meeting, directed me to do- So they, at their last meeting, directed me to do some investigations on what it would take to get a consultant on board to do an island-wide strategic plan for drainage. We're going to, a lot of communities in the area are doing this, it's kind of their first step. So we should have a lot of examples of what that would cost us, what we could expect to pay and cost. And once we get that information, they're going to, you know, they're going to analyze it and see if it's, if it's something that would potentially be able to be done in this year's budget, or if it's an item that we need to foreshadow in a future budget. So I just wanted to let you know that that work is just starting, and we're doing the investigation to see if that's feasible. I didn't want anybody to, you know, see that in the minutes and say what in the world are they doing. So just wanted to let you know that was a, that was a future next step that they're looking at.
Thank you. Douglas, question. Do you think we can do a comprehensive island-wide drainage approach without considering the island-wide sewer issue, as we all experienced last week? Because every time, as we know, there's a major flooding water incident, we also have issues related to our septic systems.
I think the answer is that they, they obviously are intertwined, and there has to be, there has to be a combined effort, similar to what we're doing, you know, not only with the water itself, but the, the construction of those projects. They're, you know, they're very tough to work around each other. We're digging massive trenches, putting pipes in the ground. There should be, you know, we talked about the example that Edie's Construction is currently working on her drainage project, and the Alapalms Water and Sewer Commission is waiting on them to finish to dig more trenches for their water project. So, you know, it's the same contractor, the same roads, the same trenches. So there definitely should be coordination on that.
And in that regard, for all of us, it complicates the effort significantly, both in terms of planning, design, funding, and implementation.
What Douglas is talking about is the global picture of Alapalms, and that is our top priority. So thank you for...
They're going to...
You got ten minutes.
They're going to start giving you information and proposals like a fire hose, I think, until you tell them to stop.
Don't use it like the fire hose, we don't need that.
That's been Ferentz.
Douglas, when you talk about the Thomas &amp; Hutton work that's being done, it's on those three outfalls.
That's correct.
Right? Now, the work that Thomas &amp; Hutton is doing isn't actually fixing anything.
That's correct.
It's just all of the planning and designing and whatever.
Engineering.
So when you say the next step, wouldn't the next step then be finding funding for those three outfalls before we do a whole island-wide?
So yes, I think on the heels of that design work finishing, we, you know, there's going to be a large construction project associated with that design work. And we will need to work out how that's going to be funded. Traditionally, we have amassed money, you know, set aside money each year, and it's taken us, I want to say, five, six, seven years per phase. And we did talk a little bit about the fact that at that rate, you know, if it takes us seven years to do five, six avenues, you're, you know, you're looking at 50, 60 years to do the whole island. So we're, we need to, you know, it's a, it's a large amount of work and a large amount of money that needs to be tapped into to get all of this worked.
But Thomas &amp; Hutton will come back to us with what the, the cost of fixing those three outfalls would be.
That's correct.
Okay.
But still thinking globally about...
Right.
And then this would be a second effort to go on in tandem if, the expectation is, is that that, this design, and it would not give you detailed construction drawings, this second project we're talking about, taking a very high-level view of the whole island and just hoping that we could create a future strategy, you know, that would, that would go on in tandem with the work on the outfalls.
I do want to make a point. The, the project that you all awarded to Thomas &amp; Hutton today, again, deals with three outfalls.
Right.
There is an assumption that the city will make improvements to the overall drainage system that takes the water to the outfalls so that they, you know, we have a, a efficient and effective system. So I think that that is important to know, that they're operating out of that assumption, that the city ultimately will also address those drainage systems that are connected in the basins that are connected to those outfalls.
Right.
Good. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Douglas, thank you. Well worth hearing that. Reports from special joint committees, none. Petitions received, none. Bills already in possession at council, none. Introduction of new bills, resolution proclamations. Authorization of a claim deductible with the South Carolina Municipal Insurance and Risk Financing Fund. I hope everybody got, went in there and looked at this.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, you know, we're $0 to $1,000, and by raising it to a $5,000 deductible, it saves us like $72,000. But if we look at 2014 through 2017, and the amount of claims we've done, that averaged out about $39,000, just over $39,000 a year, which nets us, a net savings of $32,959 a year. So to me, it's a no-brainer. So do I have a motion to raise the deductible?
I have a motion to raise the...
Second. Any discussion?
We have many claims in process.
Right.
Have we assessed those?
What we've done, and this is in your minutes, is looked at all from 2014 to 2017.
I understand.
So to answer that question exactly, I have to refer to our city interim administrator.
So this, Debbie, yeah. Debbie's been working with Karen Smith on this project, and I don't know the answer to that question, whether or not those numbers are included, and that's a fair question.
The point being, if we had 30 cases pending, our cost could be greater.
So this data only includes 2017. So, and I didn't ask the question, how many cases do we have pending? But if you assume that they couldn't be above the average of the past four years, then this analysis kind of fits. But all of this is on average. I mean, anything can happen. The, our experience could go downhill, our experience modifiers could go downhill, and the savings dries up because we're now paying higher deductibles for each of them. But I just felt like it was worth a try. At the $5,000 deductible level, I think the city's stable enough to absorb those, and hopefully we'll see some success.
But pending claims really don't matter, and this is forward-looking anyway. So any pending claims are already filed, and they'll be covered under the terms of existing insurance. So this is really only a going-forward look anyway.
That is, that is correct.
Yeah, that's right.
Without having the numbers in front of me, there is no unusual activity related to the claims that we've had this year, so I feel comfortable with that average number.
Quick question. Anybody else? Hearing none. All those in paper, excuse me, is signified by saying yea.
Yea.
Any nays? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, miscellaneous business, none. Next business, our meeting is Tuesday, January 22nd, 6:00 PM. But we do need to go into executive session, and according to South Carolina Section 30-470 A2, to receive legal advice concerning violation of tree removal ordinance on property located at 408 Carolina Boulevard. Do you have a motion?
No motion.
Second.
That's right. Don't we have a December meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
There will be a council meeting next week.
Yes, ma'am.
Tuesday, it's the special December meeting, first Tuesday, I think it's the fourth.
Yes, it is the fourth.
And it will be at 6:00.
Thank you for saying that.
It'll be very quick.
Okay. And everybody who's leaving, don't forget, we got a Christmas festival, holiday festival, street festival, 2 to 7, Front Beach.
What time, Murray?
Saturday.
What time?
6:00.
No, you're like, two minutes.
And that's when I give the board the commission.
You're not that young anymore.
Live, okay. We are now at executive session. We need to come up with a decision on the legal advice as per the tree removal at 408 Carolina Boulevard. We have two options on the table. A, vote for staff...
No, 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 no.
So just a quotation.
Just a quotation.
You have a motion.
Oh, a vote for staff, that's the quotation mark.
No, so you need a motion to...
A motion to proceed.
Or a motion to the...
Right. A motion to proceed as the...
Your motion for staff to proceed.
That's what I was reading. Yeah, that's what I was reading. A vote for staff to proceed as discussed would mean council will accept...
No, 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 no. Stop. This is all you need to say.
That's all you need to say.
Hard stop.
Or a vote against the proposed settlement. So it's A or B? All of those in...
No.
Do we have a motion?
One or the other.
Do we have a...
I would like to make a motion against the proposed settlement. That is my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, I think, I think to the point. You're gambling whether or not the settlement amount is appropriate, or are you sending a message to the community that this whole mess has been perpetrated on the community and all of us, I might add, during the process, with, with a lot of deception and a lot of behavior that I don't think we should be endorsing as a council?
Any other discussion?
And I'll just say that, that I think your, the action should be punished, really punished. So, and that we should send a message that we will not tolerate this sort of behavior.
I appreciate both of those comments and the spirit which, which the motion was given. My concern would be the impact on the homeowner, who we do not find or prejudge to have been involved in this fiasco.
Any other discussion?
I would agree with what Councilmember Kinghorn said, and also have concern that ultimately if, that he would wind up with no consequences if we pursue.
Can we just limit the conversation, the discussion away from the legal advice of the city's claim?
Okay.
You guys are fine, but just be aware.
Any other discussion? Hearing none.
Can you reread the motion?
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Because it was, it was a vote in the, not in the affirmative.
No.
It was a vote in the negative.
Right. So my motion is to not accept the proposed settlement.
What should be?
Number 2. Number 2.
If you vote yes, you're against it. If you vote no, you're for it.
Okay. All of those agreeing...
No, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Got it, got it, I see that, yes.
Okay. If you vote for it, then you are voting against the proposed settlement.
Right.
If you vote against it, then you're voting...
Well, you're not voting for anything.
Then you're not voting for anything.
Right, okay.
Do you have any test it? Voting in favor of what the proposed motion is right now?
It's rejected.
It's rejected, and the prosecutor will continue.
Right, okay.
Wait. I don't, I don't just do a positive vote.
No, you made a motion, that's all I did.
Sorry, sorry.
It's confusing.
It's not that confusing.
I want to make sure I'm right on this.
Me, too.
So if you vote yes...
Well, you're not necessarily right. I might be right, too.
You can be right, I don't care.
It's not an either, it's not an either one. You're not voting for one or the other right now. You're only voting to reject it. Or not to reject.
Yes, I want to reject.
The only motion that I'm aware of is Item 2.
Right.
And so if you vote for this, you means you're against the proposed settlement.
Right, that's correct.
That's all I want.
All right. All of those in favor of Option 2, against the proposed settlement, signify by saying aye.
Aye. I don't know how I'm voting.
It's just rejecting.
If you say aye, you are rejecting the settlement. Okay, aye, yes.
Vote for the motion, you're rejecting the settlement.
Yeah, you're rejecting the settlement.
Correct.